Here, I know.
An empty house.
Well, let's get through it before they show up.
Okay.
That sounds like a plan.
So.
Alright, so now we're gonna talk about the agenda. Uh, we have a park use request.
Yep. I wrote the event to the consent agenda.
Any objections to the consent?
A one to the consent agenda.
Yes.
Hold on, where is that? There we go.
It's, yeah.
Any objections?
Nope.
And do you wanna put Mark Flower in the consent?
That's, that's.
Mark Flower in the consent? No, Sally wanted to talk about that in the executive session.
No, no.
The project manager for the sidewalk project.
Okay.
But I want it.
Discuss the whole topic?
Yeah, the concept.
Okay. So, any objection to adding hiring of Mr. Flower to the consent agenda?
No.
Nope.
Alright.
And R1 to the consent agenda.
What?
I mean, uh, to the, oh, you wanna add the Mark Flower to the consent?
That's what Rebecca just said.
Okay.
Do you wanna talk about it?
I don't have a problem.
Okay, we'll talk about the whole context in the executive session. I don't need some, no, just a motion is fine.
Okay.
Yeah, um, and then as also for the consent agenda, number fifteen?
Number?
No objection?
Fifteen? Yes, I agree.
Arianna, you're alright.
And then how about number nine? Uh.
Which one's number nine?
Snow, uh, is there a removal charges?
I'll add it, 'cause I think we should maybe drop not charging.
Yeah, I just didn't.
Arianna, what do you think?
Okay. Me.
Alright, I'll, I'll, I'll along with that too. Sorry?
I don't think it really requires discussion.
So by adding it, we all understand we are agreeing to drop.
Yes.
Right. Do you wanna add six and seven to the consent agenda?
Nancy Sitchin needs several motions.
Oh, you're right, you're right, I'm sorry.
I just, I asked Katie that question when I came in. Alright, I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
And I'll move the whole agenda.
Second?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Alright, um, Jordan is here for number... Where did it go? I just was reading it on the agenda.
It's Dan, it's down, yeah, uh, number thirteen.
There we go.
We could do that first and then go home.
Hey, Jordan? You still out there?
Yeah.
Why don't you come on in?
Yeah, I'll do you all a favor. I'll move over there, pretend I'm here for a public discussion, and you can just ignore me. Hello, Arianna.
Alright. The, Jordan owns, um, Jordans. Shockingly. Uh, has just purchased another business and is looking to waive the thirty day comment period, uh, asking those to waive the thirty day comment period for a liquor license with the state authority. What that means in practice is a two week waiver, because we're already halfway through the one month period.
And this is for Sarucci, not?
Oh, I am, yeah, okay.
Um, so what do people think?
I think it's fine, I'll move it.
Just one quick question, do they have a liquor license?
They, they, they had a beer in mind, since they're for ten, for ten years, and I, I have no, reason to change the hours of operation or to extend the hours of, uh, I can't ever get a liquor license, because it's within two hundred feet of the church. So, all I can have is a beer in mind. So, I'm just looking to expedite, and I can't send anything to Albany to even get a temporary.
I understand.
So, I've already, you know, paid for, I've already, I've already given them a check, I've given the state a check, and I'm just sitting waiting, you know?
Okay.
Right.
I will get, second?
And Arianna already seconded.
Okay.
Any other questions or discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, you've already got two years.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Probably see you in a few hours for pizza.
Okay. I love to do this. I know.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright. So, let's just go to the list then. Uh, oh, you know, you know what we didn't do? We didn't discuss adding R1 to the agenda.
Oh, the agenda, yeah.
I think Sally did. I can add it. The R, that's the two twelve that we were talking about. Isn't it?
Right.
Yeah, I did it.
Okay. I'm, I'm confused, but I'm on paper.
That's okay, I'm confused, you can get me.
Alright, I think I have, oh, you know what, 'cause I have a red line and a regular photocopy.
Yeah, that's the issue.
Are there multiple copies of this for some reason?
So, can one?
Should just give the R1, the red line and the regular copy, 'cause that's what Bert, uh, will send to.
Okay.
Alright, so we can add R1, but not, alright, I got it.
So, add R1 and?
But not with the hot.
And we'll do the, the, um.
Okay. So, what's going over, um?
I'll move to authorize the budget modifications.
I'll move to wish the mayor a happy birthday.
Tomorrow.
Happy birthday!
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. I'll second.
Thank you very much.
Now, let's do it properly. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
We gotta run sing.
Happy birthday, dear Jason. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much.
And many more.
Thank you very much. And I think my, I think my twenty year anniversary of living in New Paltz actually too.
Really?
Yeah, came from when I was at high school. Um, okay, so enough about me, let's talk about budget modifications.
Okay. I'm the second. I move to authorize the budget modifications, and the amendment is put forth by the village president.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Six and seven kind of go together.
She has steps of wisdom.
Yeah.
I'll move, number six, authorization for Mayor West to sign contracts with M&amp;T Bank.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
I'll move, number seven, authorization for Mayor West to sign contracts.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? For those watching, oh, yeah.
Explain what we're doing.
What we're doing is finally, finally gonna have online bill pay for water bills, sewer bills, taxes, um, so we're working on the, yes. Even hanging with Arianna, I see.
Yeah, we were talking about how I didn't know what all those things meant when we had that, it's night.
Oh, right, 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 oh, yeah. So, uh, we're still gonna, so this is a contact with M&amp;T, because they provide, um, some of the backend support for that. Still gonna, still working on the front end, I got an email out to Brian McAluso, to see what we need to do to get on a website, I don't know if there's just a module we can plug into our existing site, or, you know, how the interface works, like how you would, I don't know how we would have it set up so people can choose which bill to pay, and, you know, have it linked to the, to accounts and all that. So, still working on it, but we're, we made a huge step forward.
We might, so we don't get Katie into trouble. Do it since we're all supposed to vote, we need to wait on this. Thank you, we'd be honored.
I think she can fill in our names, right?
We'll give her permission without getting her any trouble.
Sure, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, next up is actually something I'm very excited about, that was a little bit, a little bit convoluted. This is, uh, I got an email from Matt Cook, of this, uh, I think he's the director of finance, or the city manager, or both, of the city of Portland. It was sent to all the mayors and town, and supervisors of SUNY municipalities. Uh, what this is, is a proposed state law that would provide direct property tax relief to those municipalities that host SUNY schools.
Forty year SUNY schools.
Forty year SUNY schools, thank you, not the community colleges or technical colleges. Uh, if you notice, actually, and if you'll notice in the, in the paperwork, there is, the village of New Paltz numbers are wrong. Because I, they, I think what they did was they took the total number of students at SUNY New Paltz, and subtracted that from the total population of the village, um, instead of taking just the dorm residents. 'Cause I think there's about three thousand dorm residents and about four dozen commuters or, um, so our numbers are off in this. And, let me find it. For those who are interested, the, it's basically a formula that says that costs associated specifically with public safety. Oh, you know what I'll do? Here, where is it?
Yeah.
Let me see the justification. Yeah. 'Cause he's put it, there we go.
The compensation formula?
I don't wanna, I don't, I mean, I could read this whole thing, but you guys, you guys have it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I won't, I won't read it, but the justification, I think, is the clearest. That, that explains the impact of SUNY's on some communities. I mean, the prevailing wisdom is that, um, it's such an economic engine that it benefits the host municipality. But from what I've learned, and it's justified here, the economic impact of SUNY is undeniable at a regional level, but at the small local municipal level, it can be a drain. For example, if, if SUNY had paid, um, the same tax, oh, sorry, SUNY paid the same tax rate on their campus as everyone else did, villagers, uh, the village's tax rate would drop from four dollars and something per thousand to a dollar something per thousand. It's that big an impact.
Emergency services, which is.
Right, so this, this, I just wanna be clear, because this, this doesn't say that SUNY will pay their full share of taxes at their full size value. It's some direct aid based on the impacts of certain, certain impacts of SUNY, um, and this would be statewide.
Fire calls, calls, and emergency calls.
Right, or, public safety, and, and what the proposal calls for, I believe, is whatever aid the municipality receives, fifty percent goes to reduce taxes, and fifty percent goes towards other deferred spending, um, that is not public safety related. So, recreation, um, streets, et cetera. Um, so what, what they've asked for is, is, um, town and village boards for SUNY host communities to adopt or approve this and, and send word to Senator Seward and our representatives.
Be, be resolved this village of New Paltz home of SUNY New Paltz, whereas SUNY New Paltz is a welcome resident of the village of New Paltz, but whereas the village of New Paltz does suffer certain economic disadvantages, therefore, the village of New Paltz supports, um, and desires to collaborate with Mr. Matt Cook, the author of a resolution supporting a bill before the New York Legislature that provides impact aid to all municipalities hosting a four-year SUNY campus.
That your motion? Okay. I'll second that, any discussion or anything else you wanna add?
Yes, discussion, I'm, I'm curious about, um, I, I've read through it, and if it was in there, probably not. I'm just curious as to affect, um, being that we're a village, this has on consideration for the fact that our case coverage is through the town.
That is covered?
And, and the proposal calls for an IMA, where there's no clapping. Perfect, okay, yeah.
And then there's a formula that would split the, split the aid, so the town would get some and the village would get some.
Okay, good.
And the courtesy, I think, would be since the town pays half of the fire, that we would have that same kind of reciprocity.
Good.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
I, I, and do you truly authorize you to write a letter of support?
Sure, that would be great.
I'll move to authorize the mayor to draft a letter of support to Mr. Matt Cook, Director of Administration and Finance, City of Portland, regarding the New Paltz support.
Second?
Could I just offer the amendment that we also send that letter to Senator Bonacek and Senator Kao?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, report on status of zoning divisions, Sally requested this, I, I got, I forwarded the email from Bren, um, that it was, uh.
We have somebody here!
Do you have an agenda?
Um, we're ready. Um, we got an email from Bren, uh, and we'll talk about this further in executive session. But did, did that email answer your question?
But I wanted to know also what Mark and Rich have drafted, the Bren. It seems to me that there are some issues that they have, I've gotten a couple this week, that they have already been working on, that weren't on her list. And what I'm looking for is a comprehensive list of what has been done and is going to be coming forward to us, obviously, from all the stuff we got from well there, there's a lot already done.
Right.
Um, so that we can put the two together and assess it.
I thought we were looking specifically for, for Bren's work, but.
No.
Well, I think, I think all of it is.
Is, it was a whole.
Okay.
Picture.
So, we'll get that from Mark and then as well?
And that covers what my question was.
Um, so Sally, do you wanna take this discussion of new signage?
Okay. Um, let me get down, we've switched our stuff.
All in.
Now, we can find it. Okay, the sign committee met last Wednesday in attendance with David Santner and Rich Gottlieb and Robert Markfels, and we talked, and we regarded our first discussion as phase one, because we prioritized what the groups believe needed attention first. And so, you all got from me the proposed signage that they would like to see installed in terms of identifying municipal parking lots for outsiders coming into the village with directional arrows. And the other part of this is that there are three signs requested, and I think you will see that they are, I had, I wanted you to know that I had the colors mixed up, and Blue had to correct me on the colors of the signage. But anyway, uh, three, remember a while ago, we had hoped to put up a poll, you, you need to.
Yes, yeah.
If I, correct me, 'cause I've got my own copy.
Okay.
We had talked about putting up polls if side street merchants wanted to, and then DOT told us we couldn't. The way we're gonna solve that is at the intersection of Main Street and North Front, we're gonna have a sign with an arrow saying, "More shopping", the same thing at Church Street and Main. And then, because of the whole discussion over the years about connecting our community better, at the post office parking lot, we're going to have a "More shopping" sign straight ahead to get people to wash through. So, that's what we're proposing, Blue reviewed everything, corrected, what, as I said, corrected my color sense. And then, what we're gonna do, some of these signs we already have, but they're faded or they are not quite far enough back where they should be. So, we're gonna, once the board adopts this, then we're going to go out and just review everything to make sure that, um, sign placements are where they should be, and there are a number of signs we are missing. So, this is the complete list.
Okay.
And so, the committee is hoping that the board will adopt this, this does not require code change of any kind.
Okay. Um, a question, has anyone mapped it?
That's what I'm gonna do. No, you're on a physical map, so you can see area.
That's the next phase.
Okay, 'cause I'm thinking this is something that Bren could probably do pretty quickly. Uh, not Bren, I'm sorry, Brogan.
Um, you mean, put it on a map? What, what?
Like, just a visual rendering, you mean?
Yes, yeah, for what?
Just, just a visual rendering of, oh.
Just, yeah, just a map, like a dot that shows where every sign.
Well, what we're going, if, if we feel we need that, that's fine. But the phase, the next phase is the hope of, in fact, creating kiosks with, with maps of where everything is. So, since Amy is here, the map would, if I start on Main Street, I could find Ruby, Blueberry very easily by just looking at the map and seeing where it is. But that's phase two, we thought we should do this piece by piece and get it done. So, I would like to move the option.
I know I'm not allowed to talk, but is, I know I'm not allowed to talk right now, but I'm just wondering if that's in the minutes for tonight, so that we could look at it on the web.
I knew you.
If what, if the notes that you're looking at is going to be in tonight's minutes, so I can look at it later, 'cause I don't have any idea what we're talking about.
No, but we can give you a copy.
I'll give you a copy.
Okay, thank you.
Um, not, not to be, uh, you know, too picky about semantics, but can we, can, what do we think about saying "more shops" instead of "more shopping"? And then, if, if it's on the same sized sign, the lettering can be a little bit bigger?
Well, we talked about "more shops, more shopping", and Rich and Water, and I have to go with their expertise. Rich and Water and David felt more shopping was more inviting, and saying "more shops", that's sort of cold. What do you think?
Well, I guess I have to see a visual. I think if I can see a visual, I'll have.
No, no, we're.
I don't have the list that you're looking at. I was not, I wasn't at the signage meeting that you had. More shops, more shopping, there's also restaurants, there's also other things in those areas besides shopping. Some people don't come here to shop, they just kinda wander, wanna wander around and have an ice cream.
We discussed that, and we thought that trying to be too specific wasn't a good idea either. We talked about more shopping and restaurants, but then we thought, you know, that doesn't include the bakery. So, I think.
Right, it's too specific. That's too specific.
Yeah, and it makes the sign too complicated. So, we thought, more shopping, I don't, I can go back to the committee, more shops, more shopping. Do we have a preference? Arianna, you do it.
Um, I, I do, but, but I don't, I mean.
I can ask them.
I'm, I'm not gonna be like upset about it.
I mean, I have, I can go, I can go with.
'Cause I thought more shops and restaurants even too, but I just thought that more shops could, you know, be a smaller and also.
What we're doing is attach the sign to, where possible, to the municipal parking sign, so we only have one poll, instead of ugly polls. So, we didn't wanna make it, we wanted to make it large enough that you could see where, more shopping, which actually would give you bigger visibility than if you say "more shops" and restaurants, because then you have to.
Right, well, that's why I just thought more shops.
So.
Wait, it goes underneath the parking sign?
Hmm?
It goes underneath the parking sign?
No, I put it on top.
On top of it?
I mean, that's what we are, we recommend, so. Um, I can, does anybody care which it says "more shops" or "shopping"?
I agree with Arianna, but it's not a big deal.
Okay, so, if they have a preference, we'll go with what they prefer, okay?
That's fine by me.
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
Um, this is hard to visualize, the list of those signs, that's why I.
Wait till you get to the next one.
I know, that's worse.
Well, we're gonna take a walk, so I'll let you know when the walk is gonna be, and then anybody who can can join us, and then we'll see it visually.
So, you wanna postpone this?
Any, no, I wanna adopt it, and then we'll plan the walk.
Can you, when Bren, when Brogan is in the office, can you run it by her and see if she can give you an idea of how long it would take her to just make up a little map?
Well, I think, I think we could just tell her to make a map if you wish.
Yeah, I just think that would help, and, also, because.
Who would like a map?
You know, some of us might see things that.
You wanna plot it on the street, Matt? How, how, what, I'm not, what you do?
Yeah, but she'll know, she'll know what to do, and I'll, I'll email her.
Alright, why don't you, why don't you?
Do you wanna, do you wanna wait to adopt this until you have the maps? The maps are embedded?
Um, yes, actually, yes.
Arianna, what do you think?
Just in case there's anything we might wanna add or change?
'Cause Sally wants to adopt this.
I wanna adopt this so we can get the signs ordered and up. I think this is an issue that has been floating around for three years now, and I think it would be very nice if we would honor the request.
Alright.
And if people wanna tweak it, I'm happy, this is not a code change.
Yes.
So, we can add things.
Right.
And then, at the next meeting, if we find something we missed.
And also, I would like to propose that we order additional signs, just in case any of them get damaged.
Well, we'll bet you those in the past in terms of.
Three shopping signs are probably gonna be special orders, but the municipal parking are, I think, our standard stock.
So, we wanna do a set of this year's budget, is that the idea? Or we wanna do it in order to put it into next year's budget?
No, we're doing this year's budget.
This year's budget, so that's part of why you.
If you've read my panel.
I mean, I, I know that these are things that have been talked about for a long time, so.
Covering, no, I, we have more than enough to cover this in this year, in this budget year. I'd like to get it done, and, you know, we talked about trying to cooperate and collaborate together, and I think this would be a good thing to do.
Alright, I'm on board.
So, more shops I'm gonna ask about, but nobody really cares if people say, if the committee says more shopping.
Right.
Whatever they.
Okay, and Rebecca, I will speak to Brogan and answer her short cut. Anything else?
Can I ask one question?
Okay.
Really don't usually, um, but go, no, go ahead, you, you did miss public comments.
You wanna be included?
I don't really wanna make a public comment, but I just, um, had a comment about the parking thing, but if you don't wanna comment, that's fine.
Go, go ahead, go ahead.
Um, I just think it would be a great idea if we could have a sign pointing to long-term parking. Um, we have a problem with long-term parking in the village. People get really frustrated because they want to park for a whole day, they don't wanna just park for two hours at a meeting, at a meter. They want to park and then go on a hike or go for a walk.
Well, they could use the village lot, or they could use the gardens for nutrition.
But we would like to see a long-term parking sign, so people who are on Main Street could be clued into the fact that there is long-term parking available for them.
Well, the municipal parking lot does say, you know, that there is four hour parking, so it's, they know that.
I'm just saying, if you're making a, if you're making a whole sign plan, it would be a great thing to include, that's all I'm saying.
But my point, Amy, which you may not have heard, this is phase one. Your suggestion, I would put on the list for the next meeting for discussion.
Yeah, once, once we get the, um, Gardens for Nutrition lot up and running with lights, et cetera, et cetera.
It's strung out.
Yeah, I, I think that would be a good time to, to address that, once, you know, and for my, my concern has always just been the safety issue of lighting, in terms of long-street, long-term parking here. I wouldn't want to advertise it until it's adequately lit, that's.
So, it's safe at any hour for someone to.
Yes, yes, exactly.
It's right now, and people can use it, but it doesn't have all the amenities. I mean, that is one of the places we wanna put a kiosk and do some other things that, you know, that we're gonna propose, but I'd like us to get started completing some of these things.
That sounds good.
So, is there a second to Sally's one? Any more discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you. Okay, now, this is where they're gonna have trouble. Let me just run by quickly what this is. Okay. The board agreed to remove the meters on Hasbrook and Elting, okay? And move those to Main Street, so that's included. We are taking the meter, one meter off Main Street in front of Liquid.
Can I see your copy?
Oh, no, oh. Okay, I'm translating, okay? So, then, we are going to add the meters on Main Street, all the measurements on, this is all legal, legal, and Blue has reviewed everything changed, 'cause, I mean, I couldn't believe the, the footage that I had to put in. But anyway, so we've taken care of that. We are then replacing the meters on Hasbrook and on Elting, um, with signs that say "two hours". We are moving up the no parking zone on Hasbrook on both sides, St. Joseph's side and whatever we call. That's the plus side, okay.
Inside, inside, yeah.
I could do the same thing with this.
I, yes.
I, I, did I repeat your answer?
We are moving the intersection or the one space back at the top of Lookout Avenue and South Oakwood for safe invisibility reasons. Last meeting, we made a request from Dr. Morris, that, and you asked, does that be included? That is included, and Blue has taken all the measurements and stuff that we need. So, that is everything that we have agreed to on this list, and nothing else.
Okay. I don't feel like I actually agreed to everything on here. Um, and again, as Arianna just mentioned, I would like to see it mapped out as well.
Then I think one of you, I did what I was asked to do by the board. If it is visually impossible for you, then I suggest you get down to Blue and look at the map, okay?
There's one, yeah, there's one especially on the front.
My, my request of the board was that I put this in legal fashion[1786.63] My, my request of the board was that I put this in legal fashion for it to be adopted by this board on those issues that we agreed to. There is nothing in here that we have not agreed to.
I do, wait, I think I see Rebecca's point, add, under add no parking, Article Four, one ninety-eight dash nine eight?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, one ninety-eight dash nine eight. I don't remember, I don't remember discussing removing all the parking ninety feet from the street. I remember, I don't remember discussing removing a few spots.
No, no, they're, no, no, they're two different issues. One are the meters.
Right, this is adding no parking, this is what I'm saying, adding no parking to the suddenly side-
No parking, it's a two-hour, he's gonna add the two-hour, that falls in that funny, strange article that we had, it's a two-hour parking. The no parking is ninety feet from the intersection of Hasbrook and-
Right, this is what we're talking about.
Right, yeah.
That's exactly what it said, but I'm, what I'm saying is, I don't recall us discussing removing that much parking, I remember us discussing removing one spot.
Cuz ninety feet, is it, wouldn't that be like to the driveway?
It is to the rectory driveway, and that is what proposed it, said, okay, because it is so difficult if you are down there trying. The other day I went down, and there was a UPS truck parked on the right hand side, I was going into the intersection. There was a car properly parked on the rectory side. It was one lane, you couldn't, it's very dangerous. Blue thinks it's dangerous, Nancy thinks it's dangerous, all of our employees who go that way, especially when school is in session and it's, you know, between four, five, and six, is very hairy, don't. You two don't have to worry.
Uh, no, I, Sally, I-
Definitely, so it would, it is, that is the issue.
So, so I feel like, I feel like if we're gonna remove parking from there though, maybe, cuz I remember saying that I didn't, I didn't think it was that bad, um, when we talked about this last time.
Well, we-
And so I think we should, I, I don't think we should remove parking from both sides of the street.
You think one side would free it up enough?
I, I mean, I think if we're gonna do it at all, what we, one side probably would free it up enough. I, and, and just, what do you think?
Now, you are right, cuz you're not supposed to park on the right side, and it's-
Well, that's kinda what I'm thinking.
You think it's the place, right, is it the north or the south side?
The north.
North side.
You should not park there.
You're not supposed to.
Good, that's where we don't wanna park, cuz we wanna dally the stream, you know?
So, do you know what you're saying?
Well, it's also, I would say that like, even in terms of parking and getting out of your car, walking to your car, because there's a sidewalk there, that's a more dangerous area for, for multiple reasons.
You're suggesting that we would have no parking on the southerly side.
No.
We would have parking on the southerly side and not have parking on the northern side.
Yes to the south, no to the north.
So we would get rid of the first part.
Okay, so I'm gonna take no to the north after.
We'd get rid of C.
Yes. Do we agree on that?
Wait, no, you're getting rid of C.
Hmm?
We're keeping D and getting rid of C.
We're, no.
Look, this says, this is add no parking.
Yeah.
Right.
So no parking, we want no parking on the northerly side.
That's what I just listened to, and you said no.
Right?
We want parking on the nor, we, yeah, no parking on the northerly.
Right, so that's, so that's the second bullet.
No parking on the northerly.
Where there's a sidewalk, yes, where there isn't a sidewalk.
Yeah, D.
Someone just said C, so that was, that was causing confusion. So it is D, the second bullet, one and the no parking should be the one-
That we keep.
That we keep. And get rid of the other one.
Yes.
So, no, 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 you missed my point. There is supposed to be no parking-
Right.
On the northerly side.
Oh, right.
But it needs to be marked more.
Right.
So that's why I have to have that in, it needs more signs.
Yeah, something like a no parking here at a corner.
But, but we wanna eliminate no parking on the southerly side, we want parking on the southerly.
But we want- No, we don't.
Yes, we do.
We do want parking on the southerly.
The three of us are saying.
That's, that's where the sidewalk is.
Keep the parking on the south.
That's where we want it.
No parking on the north, and that should give us enough room.
So I need to take out the first one.
Correct, correct.
Yes.
And keep.
And keep the second.
Yeah, okay.
That's what we're trying to say.
Alright, now gang.
So, but, but do you think, so you went there and looked, though, is, do you think eliminating parking on one side, that'll give us enough room so it's not bottlenecking?
I don't-
They don't know, they don't drive.
I, I do, I drive, I drive, and I will make a point on that in a moment.
On both sides.
Well, I just agree with Blue.
Well, I'm just telling you what Blue said, so you, we can disagree with him, but to get rid of the bottlenecking, as I understand it, we need both.
No, I don't, um, okay, and just to the mind not driving part, okay, I do have a driver's license, I do drive cars.
No, that's not criticism.
No, no, I know, just wanna make a point.
She's defending why she is.
No, listen, one of the routes that I most frequently drive throughout the year is from Ulster Bosse's to SUNY New Paltz. And the way that I get there is via that street, I make that turn on my way to the campus, SUNY campus, and on my way back to Bosse's.
And you don't have a problem?
Yes, exactly. So, yeah, so it's, cuz, you know, for my job, we do events on, at the SUNY campus, so I take one of our cars.
In order to. Okay, what I would suggest is that we do have now, and if we have to tweak it again, we're gonna have to tweak it again.
Right.
But we have other important things to deal with, so we can add that if people think there in fact is a problem. So let's go with our compromise.
Sounds good.
Alright.
So we need to refer this to Will, to have him-
No, no, he's got-
No, he doesn't.
I'm gonna just ask him, since he hasn't finished legalizing it, he needs the top calling for a hearing.
Right, right, right.
Um, then I'll ask him to remove the first one, the first bullet under add no parking.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, is that correct?
Yep, yes.
Okay, and everybody else, and everything else is okay. And we did get Dr. Morris, I think she was hoping for three spaces, I explained to her, there was no way we could have three spaces, and that I would ask Blue to go down and measure, and he did. And he, th- these are the, his specifications of footage, all the footage is, yeah, are professional. So I would like to move this to a hearing in April, when, when-
April eighth would be our next meeting, and we do have time to notice.
And there's time.
Okay, so are you moving that?
Yes, thank you.
Is it, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, and Kate, Will, I see it has been amended, so, you catch my sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
No.
Um, just for the sake of clarity for the record, April eighth, immediately following the first public hearing of the evening, which is the public bunch, the ten minute public bunch.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, number fourteen.
Is that where we are?
Yep.
Okay. Oh, yeah, okay.
Uh, this is one of the local laws coming out of the building department, um, three, it has three parts, I think it's just one local law, yes, one local law with three parts. One part, um, would not allow permits to be issued where there's existing violations, so you have to fix all your violations before we give you a new permit. A second, uh, change would be-
Have an accurate record to be able to check.
Well, are building department compliant?
No, but I mean, we, we need all that, but it's not important to this.
Okay. Uh, the second part is, uh, the ability to suspend or revoke CBOs or certificates of compliance, certificates of compliance. And the third is, uh, to not allow excavation work before any permits were issued, so you can't do site work before the planning board tells you, uh, your project is approved. So, um, I'll move this local law.
What can we talk?
Yeah, that's for discussion, that's on-
I'll second, that was a discussion.
Yeah. Okay, so what, discussion? What do people think about this, uh?
I think I agree with Eve, that if you've got violations, you should not be able to get a new permit.
Absolutely.
Now, are there any exceptions that we want to think about?
I can't think of any.
Nope. Well, what happens if I own a property, and I become, and I have an application before the building department, and everything, and I have no violations? And I become incapacitated or whatever, and either a designated or child wanted to finish the job and didn't back that violations.
It would stay with the property, not the, not the owner person.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, as long as you-
Yeah.
Um.
What about the other two provisions?
I, so we, I, I do have, I do have an, uh, a possible example of a, uh, exception. What, what if the app, if the application for the building permit was something that needed to be done for safety purposes, for instance? And there are other, there are other violations, but this is something that like-
More of an emergency condition.
Yeah, like say, say my building has violations, but my, and it's a, you know, it's a rental property, and my decking is something that like really needs to be fixed, and it's potentially dangerous.
Or in other words, I have a, so I have a minor-
And I need a building permit for it.
Or are you asking for, um, is a violation a violation, a violation, or do we have levels of violations? I guess that's what you're asking.
No, no, what I'm asking is, can I, what if, what if the thing that I'm, I need a building permit for is something that isn't necessarily a violation, but absolutely really needs to be done for safety reasons?
And you have-
And I do also have other violations, but this, because, because we don't wanna prevent somebody from the-
Right.
Improving the structural soundness of a building, just because they have that.
I think in that instance, that this person would ask for a wicker, yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay, okay. Um, do we want to-
In other words, if you needed a new furnace.
There may already be provision for this, there may already be provision for it, and, you know, that the building just, just better have some discretion
Right, right.
for their public safety and health.
Well-
It's, it's a question for Mark or Rick.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think that, uh-
That, that's a very good question.
Do you wanna email them and ask?
Sure.
And what about the other two?
Right.
The only, the only question I had was, usually we're shall, whether it may?
What item?
Section three.
Mm-hmm.
Eighty-six dash twenty-one.
You would rather it be may?
I don't know. Return us a C O one.
I think I would like to know whose error.
Well, it, here, it would be anyone's error.
No, it wouldn't.
Well, it'd only be the building department's error, cuz they're, they're the only ones that issued.
It was issued in error because incorrect, inaccurate, or incomplete information.
Right.
Whose part? You could have a building inspector's incorrect, inaccurate, incomplete information, just as much as you could have-
I see, I see what you're saying.
Yes.
The property owner. So how do we?
I think, I think it's the, I think the, I think the intent is that it's on the part of the applicant.
Right.
Obviously.
On the part of the-
Applicant.
Well, I want it both ways. I, I think it has to be both ways.
It, that it reads both ways.
Hmm?
It reads both ways.
I don't think it does.
Really?
I think it ought to say, we ought to make it very specific, applicant and/or code enforcement officer, meet fair as fair. If you think it reads both ways, then let's just make it clearer and, and say that.
So if, if the error was on part, the part of the code enforcement officer-
Right.
Is the code, code enforcement officer essentially self-policing?
Yes.
The code enforcement officer?
Self-policing.
It would be, because it was the code enforcement officer that revoked the C O.
But I could make a complaint, Rebecca, as a citizen.
Right.
So it could come from that. Anyway, self-policing isn't necessarily a bad thing.
No, I know.
Makes you more accurate, if you know.
Mm-hmm.
Would you wanna talk to Will about language for that, Sally?
Yeah, yeah. That sounds-
Well, I think we ought to put them all together and ask Katie to send the various questions to the various components.
Right, okay.
To the first part that, uh, Ariana read, maybe a question for the building.
She's actually knowing as we speak.
I'm, I'm sending it, you know.
No, that would go to-
I, I, I know, I'm sending it.
And you're gonna do it.
I'm, she's doing it. I'm already doing it.
Oh, yeah. Alright.
These things are very efficient.
I, I don't think this needs to go to Will, I think it, we just have to say that's what we want, if we agree on it. I just-
I'm not sure that makes sense.
I, I just think it should be clear. I think some of our codes can really be easily misinterpreted, and I forget what we were talking about with Mark and Rick, and they were reading it one way, and I read exactly the opposite. So, I think for the sake, could, like, let's, let's ask Will, could we clarify by adding applicant or building inspector, since I have to do the working stuff, do you want me to ask this?
Sure, if you wanna get the answer.
I mean, I have to do the working stuff anyway.
Right, right.
Okay, so the, the, if, if, if you don't feel that this paragraph pertains to both, I think adding a second paragraph where this current paragraph, um, was issued in error because of incorrect, inaccurate, or incomplete, incomplete information submitted by the applicant, blah, blah, blah. Um, and then a second paragraph, which would read essentially the same, but saying if the, um, if it is determined that blah, blah, blah was issued in error because of incorrect, inaccurate, or incomplete information on the part of the code enforcement officer, da, da, da.
Okay, we get it, I'll do that, but I'm just, I, I also have a note to myself, could we clarify by adding applicant and/or code enforcement officer?
Right.
And then I'll tell him your idea of two paragraphs, and just let him tell us what he's-
Yeah, that's perfect.
And what about the excavation?
I don't know enough about excavation.
Well, it just doesn't allow it unless you already, uh-
It, it wouldn't be allowed without the approval of the planning board.
Thank you.
If you had a plumbing fight, you would, I mean, say you needed, you're, were responsible for sewer, the water, would let you sew, cuz that's better. Sewer, sewer from my, my house, out to the pipe, now, there's a big crack in it. So it's not the village's responsibility, it's my responsibility, it's the house owner. I don't need planning board approval to have the plumber come and dig that trench. What I do need to do is tell the building department and call that, whatever that number is you call about digging.
Dig New York. Dig New York?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay.
Well, this, this makes an exception. Look at number eighty-six twenty-nine A, no excavation, removal, or storage, um, other than the excavation, removal, or storage necessary in connection with the construction of building structures, retaining walls, yada, 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 public utilities. I would imagine that, so it's not construction of the actual building that we're look, that we're concerned with, it's the site preparation before construction happens.
Right. Okay, a good example, Sally, would be the proposed, um, hotel up across from ShopRite, where they've been-
Playing.
Yeah, exactly, this would be that type of a situation.
Do you need-
And didn't Bren give us a-
Do you need planning board approval for retaining walls and fences? I don't think so.
I don't believe so.
That's, that's, that's what I'm-
No, that's the exception, remember, this is the exception to the, to the rule.
Let me re-read this again. It doesn't say it's the exception.
Look here, no excavation
Yep.
Other than the excavation, removal, necessary in connection with this.
So that, I would be okay with my sewer then?
I believe, I believe so, yeah.
Okay, I think you're right, okay.
Any other questions? Alright, so do we wanna table this to our next meeting?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because there's the two questions.
Two questions.
Yeah.
So that's gonna be April eighth?
April eighth.
April eighth.
Um, and finally, R one?
Just to remind you that the cutoff date for that will be the Wednesday before, because we're close for Good Friday.
Right. Um, finally, R one is actually two different laws that are unrelated. We'll just add it because it's also, well, they're both amendments to the zoning change, zoning code. Let's see, part, the first section of this, um. It changed the definition of subdivision.
Yep. Did he just say two were combined together?
Right.
The R one that we've already discussed, and subdivision was there.
Right, and there was something else added too, which I'll get to in a second. The, uh, the main change in the R one is the setbacks, the minimum yard setbacks, number eight.
But remember, and this is just, maybe you all feel it's covered. Remember when Bryn presented this, I asked. I mean, I agree with the setbacks, that those are minimum, but it doesn't seem to me that this says that you can put your house at any angle on the lot. Say somebody.
It does say that.
You think it does?
Because all of me, all that matters is, you know.
The minimum on the side.
Right, here's the thing.
Solar orientation of the person?
So, maybe this is the.
Solar orientation, is that what you're?
Or any kind of alternative orientation.
So, say like that's the lot, the solid line, and the dotted line is the setbacks?
Yep.
So, you could have your house right here, you, you know, or you could put it like that.
Or you could put it this way.
Or put it that way, yeah, exactly, as long as it stays in that box.
Are within the, okay, alright.
And you think that's.
Yeah, you can, and you can put it wherever, as long as.
Well, cause it definitely doesn't say anything about which direction the house is facing, it just says how far back it needs to be and all that.
That's what started this whole discussion because of Bonneville Platte, and they're building a solar house.
Right, right, oh, oh, oh.
And the question was.
No.
Okay.
I, I remember, yeah.
No, no house in the village has a fifty-foot setback. And if you had a fifty-foot setback, you couldn't orient in, in a lot size like we require. So, the question then became, should we make it a twenty-foot setback in the front?
Right.
And that would give you the ability to turn it or, no upside down, but. I move that. Are we happy with this?
Are we killing you?
Yes, I think this is good.
What happens? Did, what happens if I, and this happened recently, I combine three lots and then subdivide it to two? And it doesn't matter whether I do it by deed or whatever.
And, and what about, what about it?
By the, the combination to I take three lots, I put it together, because I really want either two or three lots in a different.
Configuration.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Does this cover it? Cause it's only talking about division, but does it assume?
But, but it says it is.
Any activity I might have done before?
Alteration.
In other words, I think this assumes that I had one piece of, big piece of land, and I wanted to subdivide it. It's sort of silent. Oh, no, I think, I guess I'm, I'm okay. Because the second line says includes any alteration or deletion.
Alteration.
Right.
So, even if I deliberately put three together to divide it in three in a different way, this will cover it. Yes?
The final thing, yes.
Okay.
The final part was added today.
Oh, that's.
I don't know if you've read it yet.
You've got something.
This is a conversation I had today with Mark and with Will.
Right.
Um, a new section four, Mark found a section of the code.
Oh, these are the sign regulations, I had that on a separate piece of.
Yeah, uh, Mark found a, 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 a passage in the code that, if you read it the right way, it looked like it outlawed all signs in the village altogether, of all kinds. So, Will and, um, yeah, Will and Mark cleaned that up.
So much for Sally's work.
Yeah, exactly, all Sally's work is down the drain.
Yes.
So, so number I, under section four, is cleaning that, that language so that the signs are allowed per our other sign regulations. The second thing is something I asked Will to draft language for, which is legalizing A-frame signs. Um, the little things that are outside, standard board signs.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for two reasons. One is, they're already in the village and, and second, they don't really seem to cause much problem. Um, so that's why we put in, in, to the extent the same do not obstruct pedestrian or vehicular traffic, yada, yada, yada.
Okay, so.
But they do, do on Main Street, no matter what you say, because the sidewalks are too narrow.
Well, then this would prohibit them there.
At the discussion of the building inspector, yeah.
But the building inspector was asked, in September, this board approved periodic checks on Saturday by either Mark or Rich, because we were having problems with sign boys, and they were supposed to do it, and they have not been out yet.
Well, I still wanna legalize them, um.
Yes, and also they would.
I'm, I'm not.
Under these conditions, I wanna legalize.
No, no, my point is this. We can pass as many rules as we want, or what we think are good laws. If they aren't enforced, we might as well not waste our time.
Sure.
I, well, I actually think that this language will make it easier to enforce.
Okay.
Um, and also, another thing with this, um, they would need to, um, they would need to be approved, the signage boards, which will make a difference in terms of
I think that's.
Of, um, the look, et cetera, et cetera, that this way you don't have a hand painted signage. I've seen around.
Do we need to refer the, these to the planning board?
Is it so bad to have somebody hand painted?
Well, it's just that, that, um, it would be approved, who approves our signage? It's the planning board, I think, on subdivision.
I don't know.
Yeah, I know we do.
It might be the building department.
Okay.
Is it?
Uh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know we do have code for that.
I don't remember ever hearing the planning board talking about signs, except.
The building department has a code, and everybody who's making the sign has to check the measurements.
Right.
And make sure it's the right size. Yeah, I remember the code from years ago, I just sort of didn't remember.
It includes lighting of the sign as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so do we wanna? Are there any questions we have about this, or do we wanna refer this to the planning boards?
I'm, yes, yeah, yes.
The planning board? Cause we don't have to, it doesn't.[1761.61]